Hey all, this is Zerz, welcome back to XCOM Camara Squad. We are going into the Protect City Hall mission. We have knocked down all three investigations. This may be the last hurrah. For that crew, I've made one modification. I put Axiom back because I think we're just gonna need his longevity. And we have a little more flexibility giving him the dodge weave instead of the regen weave because we get ready to regen like crazy. Um, everyone else, let me do a patchwork, another breaching charge in case this is unnecessary. We have two auto keycards, two breaching charges, just in case. I don't know what to expect on this mission. It's the last one, so let's make it good. Beyond that, everything is more or less hunky-dory. So... Oh, and the other thing I switched around was giving Verge the extra mag because with serials it could be useful and then the hair trigger would be better on Axiom. More or less, he doesn't have the abilities that Godmother have burning a lot of ammo. So, alright, let's see what's gonna happen. Door, vehicle security door, three protecting encounters. Let's see what the endgame looks like. I'm curious, I'm very excited. It's been a long time, not that long, but we did a long war, so not that long, but you know. I'm curious to see how this goes. Very curious indeed. Ooh, custom map. Oh, sick! Nice, damn, that driver's awesome.
Unknown hostile swarming City Hall. The protective detail was, they were completely overwhelmed.
We have little time.
Understatement. Alright. Lastion is rooted, but lastion also overwatches. Think maybe the side door is best? On the other hand, let's keep everyone together. I think we just keep everyone together, just go hard. I have no idea if she's gonna be useful on this or not, so I'm gonna take her just to be safe. Seems odd. Do I wanna root you for a round? But not the worst thing in the world, right? You know what? Actually, I'm gonna rearrange like that. Because she can definitely afford to be rooted. Alright, gents, let's go.
Time to breach.
Let's see. What is this? Paladin, okay, this one, that's a merc. We got a Hitman, another merc, Cobra, another merc, Bomber, another merc, Trooper, another merc. They're all mercs. They're all mercs, okay, and we can't hit dick. Alright, well, let's deal with the one aggressive guy, hopefully we can get him down. Nice shot, Verge. At a boy. 70 with your other shots, eh, might as well then. In the stock, he hit him anyway, nice, good on you, lad. That's your best shot. 67 on the trooper, good god, everything's far away. Holy shit. Uh, sure. Didn't realize it, wow, okay. I will take that then. Nice, alright, two down. Not too shabby. Couple defensive actions, but this is not gonna be good, there's a lot of dudes here, wow. That's a lot of dudes. Now, we need to minimize how many things are gonna come up, two... Okay, three... Four. These aren't too bad, actually. Cobra's extra annoying. Alright, well, these are all mercs and we've dealt with them before, so let's do this right. Try to get as many of the two, threes, and fours stupid as possible. Only three's gonna be in the sight range, so that's fine. Stupor three. That's unlucky. They all have a really good cover, which is kinda sketchy. I'll be honest with you. We need some better, no, 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 we need some better aim. I need to put more things into the cycle here. Bomber could probably do some work on something.
Go on, lash out.
Never gets old.
It doesn't really. It's awesome. Ah, yes, that car's gonna explode, it's gonna be dope. So he's not gonna be able to shoot me unless he wants to die. Good shot. They do have a lot of HP. Okay, very low damage. Gotta get away from the cars, though. Are you really?
You cannot keep me down. They think you an appealing target.
Excellent. Did I get winged? Okay, no, I didn't get winged. Alright. So you're gonna have a really bad day when that blows. Should blow soon-ish. Alright, Trooper 2 is gonna move before this pops. And get you here. That'll handle you for sure. Okay. What I wouldn't mind, then, is getting rid of your face. If at all possible. How's that car not blowing up yet? Inquiring minds wish to know. Am I sticky-bomb you? Here, go somewhere else. No, that's not where I want you to go. That worked. That's a lot of damage, oh, he's ruptured, that's fine. Cobra? Are you hanging? I think the Cobra tried to see you, nevermind, we're good. Briefly felt bad for her. It's annoying. Two down. Is it Cobra 2, where's this? Fuck, there's a lot of guys. Car better explode sometime soon. Tired of waiting. The problem is, I'm in a long-range fight with a crew that specializes in close-range stuff. Which is a wee bit frustrating. And really, what I wanna do is deal with the flanks here, but there's nothing that's close enough for me to just unload on. I'm not happy, Sam, I am. Get on here, at least do something interesting. He is. Anything I can really unload on here? Yeesh, not really, eh? I don't really wanna burn Quake. Only get a one-time go on that. Which I always thought was a little weird, it seems like an odd cooldown not to have that. Ah, do we Overwatch that? Not gonna be too good. Paladin 3. Really, I would wanna kill this dude, but don't really have a good way of doing it. How big is my Quake? Yeah, not really, it's within my moving range, so... Shit. Start shooting the Paladin yet? 39, oh, that's not good. Well, let's see if he twitches. Let's see, I don't know what's gonna happen here. He's probably gonna break his Overwatch, maybe? That didn't... Overwatch removed, really? Okay, that's annoying. I didn't think the root function would. Regrettably, it appears like... There's a lot of dudes on this map. We have regen weave, so we should be popping plus 2 and the poison will basically be ineffective. Does poison inhibit regen weave? There's something I didn't know. Okay. Yes, this is, um... Much harder go of it than I expected, honestly. In this first breach. Hitman 5, I don't wanna do anything with. Cobra 10's annoying. Cobra 8's even more annoying, though, I think. Sure. Stasis that thing for now. See how it goes. I don't know if it's gonna fly or not, but we gonna try, we gonna try. What do we have? Nothing to reprogram, which is just, I'm not used to that. Or... Can zap you and hope that kills you? Let's do this, because I'm praying that thing's gonna blow at the end of the round and maybe I'll be able to get you. Because you're within the... The mental network right now, so... And, uh, let me flay you if necessary. That's gonna be annoying. Can you do something funky, too? To the snake, okay, that's not who I expected from Verge. That's actually good for me, I'm happy with that. Quite happy with that, in fact. That might hurt Axiom. Okay, fuck, that's annoying. Okay, that flay's not gonna do it, then. Well, if we get lucky, if we roll lucky flay, then we will. Stupor something else here. Okay, I guess it's the only thing that's stupor. Stun 2 is pretty good, is it bird off the mine merge? It does not. Frustrating, but okay. Do a good flay. Bobby flay, come on. Flay for 3, flay for 3, flay for 3! Yeah, boy! Alright, that's good. Oh, that was explosive. 1 HP regenerated 2 damage. Okay, the regen hits first, that's why the poison's annoying, gotcha. I don't, I think I really need to reload, though, bro. It's gonna pop before the Paladin pops? Yes, it does. It pops the Cobra, really? No, he stasis'd. That is what we call tech bullshits. We can get this Paladin, though, which is useful. Let's drop this pally for sure. That's gonna be guaranteed drop. Snack 2 is near what I call a good time. Snack 2 is stasis'd. So hitman 10, maybe? Because he's kinda out in the open, he'll provide us a pretty decent target. That's fine. Well, his grenade already went off, so... Too worried about that at the moment. Okay. You're still rooted. Which really sucks, but we can at least take a swing at this guy. That looks pretty good. 72 there is also decent. What I really wanna do... Let's try to get some guaranteed damage in, I think. Not guaranteed, but high likelihood damage. Let's juice up. And see if we can't do something about that. I can surge, but everything's so spread out. It's just a really weird map. It's just a really weird setup for this crew. Yeah, that's the best I got. And that's gonna pop. Two down. Bomber was killed. Oh, wow, they use old-school mine merge, then. That was old-school mine merge, I didn't realize. No, regen weave. I don't care about your poison, you're gonna stick me in the poison all day. Poison all day, it's all good. I didn't realize you were using an OG regen weave. That's good to know. I mean, regen weave, mine merge. Just killing the Paladin kills the mine merge target. That's huge. Yep. Alright. I'm on board with that. Thousand cuts indeed, stun 2, which is fantastic. Very good roll on that. Yow. Poison's okay. Luckily, thanks to, um... Axiom's armor, we're actually still up on plus armor with this. Cobra 3 gets to move first, doesn't she? Do we have an action Cobra 5? I might have a dash action there, but it's unlikely. Since we're not killing that thing anytime soon, so probably stupor this thing. Yep, okay. Stun 1 is not great. That is not good. That's good. It's alright, sunshine. We'll get you. Problem with the shrap is it didn't go off. Alright, well, I think we just, no, 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 load. That looks suspiciously like reload. After all these years of XCOM, that still looks like reload to me. Don't fuck this, I mean, I could run in gun, make this easier. I think I'm gonna do that, I don't, really don't wanna miss this right now. I'm already poisoned, I don't care. I don't care, the regen weave handles it, it's fine. Thank you. Alright. Do we smush it? Or do we smush the other dude? Oh, have to be a fly upon the wall. Well, the juice up, maybe we get an extra, extra whoopee, whoopee time. 3-6 of the smash, can I get close enough to actually shoot that fucker? Not as well as I would like, I don't think. Well, let's see what we can do from here. Can we get a flank on him from here? If not, we'll go ahead and smash. Oh, I can't do it now, well, balls. That's really not what I intended to do there, but that's fine. We get lucky. Got him! I'll fry the other one. Alright, that was a... That was a hell of a first act. Damn. When it's over, these are all Strike mercs, so... I think it is the Atlas guy from Strike that this is. Unless there's a twist at the end, which probably will be, hopefully. 1 armor, extra action point. Last man through is Claymore. Extra grenade isn't bad. Let's see. In case there is mech there, it's probably good, but I don't know if there is mech. Do it like that. At this rate, I don't, you know what? No, the disables are too good. But he can't, she can't take advantage of the extra action point. Trying to think what's gonna be good here, you know, you know, let's just, let's not mess with the good thing. That's what we've been doing. Let's do that, that's been working for us. Worst comes to us, we can always accelerate him. Sorry, I was in the middle of a beverage and then I saw something creepy. Oh, it's a brute, okay, for a minute I thought that was something else. It was something like a pink behemoth of death, it's just another whoopee time. Aggressive guardian, that's unfortunate. An alert guardian. There's a bruiser I don't really care about. The aggressive guardian, I'm not a fan of, so I'm gonna levitate him. We're gonna load as many rounds of humanly possible on him to morale improves. Yeah, I saw that coming, you were aiming the gun in completely the wrong place. I like to think that's an indicator of how bad it's gonna go. I know it doesn't work that way, but wow, that's a shit roll. That's a better roll. Probably slam gets rid of him that way. Yeah, slam gets rid of him. Nice. Yeah, like that. Really don't like that. I might have to pop something here. Hey, gentlemen? Are you all up for a little bit of ruckus? Because I'm up for a little bit of ruckus. I'm feeling like a little bit of ruckus. Yeah, I want you all to have a bit of ruckus up in here, huh?
Throwing grenade.
Have a little bit of ruckus up in here.
Engaging target.
Yeah. Work for daddy, alright, sorry. This is getting creepy. Stupor him. Stupor the real. Nice, okay. That's good rolls so far. Uh, we kill things, yes? We can already serial down a brute, but I'm feeling whatever's gonna come in the last room is gonna get nastier. They wouldn't handle this without it. God, Verge's aim is good! Or do we do with Hitman 5? Hitman 5 is not disabled currently. What's Hitman 6 doing? Oh, he's freaking out, right? Hitman 5 might be the right target for this. Hit him? 75 is not great, maybe we just... Not flay, not flay. Let me just have this brute go ahead and just unload a little bit. Shoot somebody. Please. That'll do. The high-ground shotguns are no fun, but that's what it is. What do we stasis? Stasis... Or 8? Yeah, I think so. A lot of oppo, but we have this kinda under control. Use that term very loosely. I really don't like that shield. It's all sorts of bullshit. Get Claymore up the order, I think we just clicked Claymore up the order here. I need to clear some heads here. I tell you what. It's definitely a bit more complicated than the last couple rounds. Could I get a nice change ult over here? This might actually let me kill like a pile of stuff. Yeah, this all jolts, this is great. Let's get some more disable on this area. We're lucky. Pretty good. The reason I'm doing this... Is that I wanna kill this civilian, no kidding, uh, there. For free ruptures. Got a kill there. Now, we get plasmas, which makes this a little easier. He's stunned for a while, this hitman needs to kinda not exist.
Throwing plasma.
Bruiser up high, we can get some attacks done, so is that brute? But there's really not much I can do about that. Get lucky. We can really unload some damage here. He's crit. Oh! That is on you, buddy, you're gonna pay for it, I think. I think you're gonna pay for that. Just saying. Civilian got herself out. Good move, girl. Okay, where are we at? Oh, Axiom. Let me Axiom you a question. Rock the surge here. I think we can do a bit of good work. Why is it showing no damage there? That's really odd. Okay, apparently I only damage you from there? That's weird. Okay? Got a hit. What's up, buddy? I'm doing this because I think this will give me cover from what's on high ground right now. Damn. What's up? Nice! Counterattack, training, paying dividends, alright. Have their stasis, but not for long. I'm gonna stun the hitman. The bruiser shoot him in the face. Yep. That guy. I have so many things in my psyching network right now. It's disturbing to everyone. I'm counting on... But he's, he's obviously not very happy with me right now. But that don't matter. Changing only jolts one, right? So I can handle that with a shrap. It would probably be good to unload over here a bit. If you're one of these dangerous guys. Ooh, I didn't realize punches go through shields. Oh, hi. I didn't think you were that psyched up yet. Nice. We have a plan now. The uplift mofol party plan. Go, baby. There you... Does he have counterattack? I wonder if he has counterattack? You know what? Let's not find out if he has counterattack. It's just, you know... Not for science. Didn't she get stunned 2? Must've been just one, anyway, you're dead now. Goodbye. Oh, not quite, sorry. God, need to anticipate, boy. Guardian's annoying, but doesn't do too much on his own. Ooh. That looks pretty good, though, let me get a little closer for that. Alright, count. Um... This'll do, pig. I'm not calling you a pig, don't worry, I'm just using your ability to fire at things. Hey, what's up? And that grenade... Hell, yeah! Team wiping the board. Alright, those guys are not... Not really delivering up there, man. You're not delivering up there, and that's fine by me. Hit the guardian a bit, buddy. Get rid of your melee stance Overwatch. They're still in it, apparently. Okay, that didn't help. That's what you call tech bullshits. Still hear gunfire. We gotta keep pushing. As you can see, most of our cooldowns are still here, so... Wow, these guys can't hit the broadside, yeah, exactly. That's a damn good question, Axiom, I asked myself, axed myself the same thing. Good zap? Thank you! That's what I wanted to see. Zappy zappy. That's okay. That's what shrapnel is for. I'm just gonna relocate with the sticky grenade, I don't really wanna find out. How about this? If you move, you get a face full of hurt, yeah? I don't really wanna jump in there, because there is a shrapnel grenade. Just aching for a target. Got civilians like, I don't wanna be here right now. See what this does. It's a really weird lack of Overwatch in that square right there, but alright. See, if he moves, he's gonna have a bad time. Doesn't mean he's gonna have a bad time, so either way, he's having a bad time. He had a bad time. Mission accomplished, clean so far, folks, and now we still have all our cooldowns, except for team-up. We lost team-up, but that's alright. Be funny if he wasn't the guy who's orchestrating this. He always seemed a little weird. I mean, few aggressive enemies, okay, but I'm gonna... Go ahead and just go, go in here. I'll be alright. Scanners, please, yep. Let's roll. Alright. Two encounters in. Last one on. Oh, we got something we can hack. It's an alert mech, what's, was aggressive bomber, ew. A necromancer, that's aggressive. Well, friend, your ass is getting lifted. I like how all these enemies are kinda like the greatest hits. Hundred percent on the mech, which means we pretty much nearly have it dead to rights. So that works for me, actually. This is... Get 11 to 13, so if we get lucky, we can kill it. No, we'll deal with it later. Unlucky. Claymore. Get rid of that thing, please. Obliged. Thought you zapped that thing, you didn't zap it? Okay, I need to get rid of this guy. Lot of things I need to do here. Gonna hack that, we're gonna zap that. Alright, so what do we disable? We disable, oh, there's another necromancer here, well, there's an easy answer. No. Damn. I wished for something better. I did not get it. Um, well, for lucky... That guy'll do something interesting. Maybe? Maybe? Not the target I was hoping for. Oh, the mech's gonna move, shit! That's annoying. Didn't think mech 2 was gonna get a roll here, and he's gonna, uh... Well, that's, that's gonna hurt. I'm surprised she didn't zap the mech, I think she's within two tiles of it, so she technically should zap the fucking thing. Back to hell, I mean, it makes sense what he's doing right now. Double move, okay. Okay, player, let's play. Ooh, 55, really? Shit. No, didn't, didn't get it. We're gonna motily induce... Claymore's the answer? Yeah, we're gonna motally just claymore. A little more fun up in here. That's really unfortunate. But okay. Shrap bomb... There. Other mech's gonna have something to say about this too, I think. I'm just gonna go a little bit, get one of these civilians out here. Don't wanna burn an action for this right now, that's, that's the goal. You know? Yep. Get rid of this problem if we can. Problem handled? Uh, damn right it was. This'll actually go off before this needs a thing. Counting for a big capacitor discharge here, folks. The mech didn't... I thought that would disable the thing. The mech's double moving. Super weird. That's super weird. I'm not, I don't know what that's doing. But, that seems odd to me. What do we deal with? Bomber 5 rapid fire? Yeah, that's probably what I'm looking at here. Might also get a ruckus up here, and I think that might not be a bad idea. It's goo, he's already berserked technically. Let's ruckus you 2? Can we ruckus you 2? I'm pretty sure we can ruckus you 2. Come on. You know, want a little bit of ruckus in your life, I mean, looks like, there we go. You two have fun with each other. Totally platonic way. I mean, shoot each other in the face. What's up? Oh, you suck. It wasn't even cover. Both of you suck. Just for that, I'm gonna kill you slowly. The odds of me hitting that thing, probably not very good from here. How have you not juiced out yet? My question. Please, I'll fuck this up. I shouldn't, shouldn't blow the second one. There we go. Alright. Cleaning up, baby. Cleaning the fuck up, he's still overwatch, what the fuck? That must be like an automatic thing he can do, cause that doesn't make any sense whatsoever. Yep, that'll do, pig. Mechs avoid a shrapnel once, but it won't avoid it twice. It's interesting this can be. Can you relocate into the... I have a present for you! Relocate into his overwatch. Alright, Verge, I want time to have some fun with this. Stupor. Berserked. Deal with that guy first. Wouldn't mind getting a little bit of, uh, extra aim before I take a shot at that mech. Pray we get him unloaded. Stun 2 is a good roll, though. I like how there's plasma blasts on that panic room. Oh shit. I didn't think that would blow up the barricade? Are you serious? It doesn't blow up cover? The fuck? I guess, alright, whatever. I'm, I'm sure it's fine. We won't get a clean, if there's like a clean chivo for this, I'm sure. Whatever, he stunned 2, right, yeah? Can we just keep shooting at this guy until he dies? Make this a little better. I was pretty sure that wouldn't blow the cover there, though. That's really cheesy, cause that does not go through cover, nor does it affect cover. But alright. And they played that game today. And they won. Don't need to even banish this. Nice. I usually just shoot this guy until he complies. Compliance shall be rewarded. Fire. Nice and easy. It was all part of the plan, Deputy Mayor, sir. We meant to destroy that barricade, we totally didn't misjudge it or anything. Like, totally. Hey sunshine. Alright. Glad we dealt those mercs before, and we knew what we were dealing with. Operation Saccharine Ember. Act of desperation, Seren counts on a unified mood of the city and face the threat of solidarity, not fear. Where behind this attack is miscalculated, okay? So there's still more after this? Hmm. I didn't expect that. Let's see. Maybe, I mean, I don't know, that doesn't mean anything. I'm just speculating at this point. We've never gotten this far, obviously. Alright, what do we have to say, Chimera Squad? Mastercrafted machine guns are done. Castle Vorthu, a panic room is some kind of joke? I wish it were, Leggera must prepare for the worst. She has it right. Then I vote to authorize funding, just like that? You rarely agree with each other, when you do, I know the matter isn't trivial, if I don't entirely understand it. Good on you, Vorthu. Uh, nope, there's more. There's a takedown atlas mission, we ain't done yet. Just haven't ever mastercrafted, uh, subbies. I mean, this is cool, of course. But, we're not gonna be able to do it in time. Bubbly bubble grenade, I mean, this is all, it's all good stuff, I mean, this is all good stuff. Alright, sure, sure, uh, fire gear, yeah, I like boom. But, some critical mission is happening. Oh yeah? Listening. Do you wanna be the ascendant group here? Exactly. Distractions. I was right! I was right! Yep. Atlas. If we're gonna make a big entrance, we will. I mean, that crew worked beautifully, but I thought this was it. And it's not, that's exciting. I mean, I'm gonna grab both of these, cause I have the intel for it, clearly. And we'll buy the mastercrafted smigs just so we... For completeness's sake. Can we use any of those things for anything on anybody? I don't know. We're not even sure what this is gonna look like. But we will figure that out next time, for now, I've been nervous this has been Chimera Squad, not the last mission. Turns out... I'll see you next time. Till then, haha, exciting!